If we might all have here. How much you towards me?
Morning, first thing of the day, whatever it is. I don't know what it is.
Oh, Lord. Okay, is everybody ready to get started? Just a minute. There will be just a second. Okay, uh, we just want to welcome everybody that came out this evening. Appreciate all of our citizens in attendance. If you've had an opportunity, if you want to speak, you need to sign that sheet in the back. We'll give you three minutes time. Time to go over the law. Because we want to give everybody an opportunity to say the piece. Uh, we know we've, uh, had some extraordinary times. Seems like unprecedented times that we've been dealt with. So we want to make sure that we do the right thing. Try to explain some of those things, see what we can do. Or, uh, try to get some things corrected. Uh, but first I would like to read this to you and then I'm going to stand and I'm going to give the implication, say the pledge. Everybody, I guess, knows what this week is, a special time this week. Uh, Easter Sunday is a very special time for Christians after Jesus died on the cross. Good Friday, his body was taken down, buried in a tomb. On Easter Sunday, the tomb was emptied because Jesus rose from the dead. I just want to thank you for that. Because we do have life and life after this day. So, if everybody would stand and please be grateful. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just want to thank you for this evening, Lord, and we thank you for our county and our citizens and leaders. Lord, we just thank you for everything that you do for us, providing the opportunities of life. And, Lord, we just ask, God, that you would give us the wisdom and knowledge to, to do your work. Or we pray for all of our citizens, our elderly, our children in foster care, God, and we ask that we just lift those children up, God, that they can find a home, Lord, that would help them. Lord, we thank you for Isaiah one seventeen, God, and those people that have worked diligently to bring solutions and help to our area and our county. Lord, we just ask that you would go with us, that you would lead and guide us, and we will give you all the glory, honor, and praise of Jesus. Okay, like, uh, like I said, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Anybody that comes in late, uh, whatever, I'll try to catch, see them come through the door to make sure they sign the signup sheet, they're going to speak. Right now, I need approval of the agenda. I can hear motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Any discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, now we're going to go into the public hearing to see why we need to move by closing the tax rate in public hearing. Thank you, sir. And, uh, I apologize if I get so many things. So that, but the first person that we have on the list to speak is Betsy Sunfield, I think, from those days.
Good evening. I have a question on one of your handouts. Can you flip over a few pages there for me? Can you, can you move down to your next? Get going. Another one? Another one? That one. Okay. I have a question about the school board increase. Does that include the Virginia lottery money that the county's giving these days from the casino?
It does.
It does? Okay, so that pretty well takes care of that amount then, right? That's in addition to the lottery money, the casino money. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madison. Uh, I guess it's, uh, LPN student.
Hello, everybody. I broke something out. Of course you love to know. Hello, everyone. My name is Madison Hill, and I'm a first-year nursing student at the Russell County Career and Technical Center. My classmates and I are here to discuss the termination of the LPN program. There are many people in the county that are upset about the decision, not just us. The LPN program created many opportunities and jobs for the residents of Russell County. Today, while at clinicals, we heard many testimonies about how special that our program is. Many of the, many of the employees actually graduated from the program as licensed practical nurses. There was a very special lady that I spoke with today that graduated from the first class in nineteen ninety-four. Thirty years later, she is the ADOA of the facility and has been an LPN nurse since graduating. At the last meeting that occurred on April seventh, it was said that you all wanted jobs and people to come to let them. How was cutting the program beneficial to this community? We were told the program was cut due to budgeting, so why was this just now decided? Why was the budget not a problem at the beginning of our school year? The majority of my classmates are lifelong residents and pay taxes in this county. The program was a last resort for most of us, and community college was not an option due to finances or scheduling. We were told yesterday that we may get a fifteen hundred dollar scholarship to Southwest Community College if they could somehow make it work for us. That is fifteen thousand dollars, so why couldn't that amount go to next year so we can finish the program? By not taking a new first-year class, you would no longer need three teachers, only two. The LPN program worked for us, and we are proud and love being students. But we were promised we would be able to graduate and sit for our boards. It has also been brought up that the county wanted thirty students for the class. Twenty-six people applied and was not accepted due to the difficult interview process and test scores. Fourteen students were accepted, now there are ten of us left. We deserve an opportunity to finish what was promised to us. I hope that you all take into consideration how the decision will not only negatively affect our lives, but our families and the community.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, Ms. Jessica. All right, thank you. Thanks. So is that, goes all the way down along this alley? Thank you, Lord. Okay, thank you, Lord, so. Okay, Willis Rowe? I'm sorry, I said, sorry. Orge Christian?
Thank you, Senator. We had a speaker before the board again this afternoon. I spoke tonight, uh, about my cessate, I was putting my pocket all the way up. I ain't going to cover that ground tonight. But in the last few months, in the year or so, food, electricity, and gas has went up tremendously. And then we come along with this cessate increase. Do you all speak maybe a possibility to increase it to a tax rate? I hope you don't, because we do. You don't seem to have any consideration, in my opinion, for the taxpayers that's supplying the money to punish the financial, uh, of all the people that the tax dollars are going to go for. So, uh, you know, you got your wants, you got your needs, you got your have-to-have. And I think considering this forward tonight, I think that you need to consider what we each department has to have. Not that wishfully, it's like I spoke to other than I, but what they have to have because of the burden that the taxpayers has had through the month. If I say food, gas, electricity, and if you don't, uh, own your home, you got to pay for it. The other day, coming up. So let's strongly consider, I've got down here, let's consider maybe thirty-six percent rate instead of that sixty-three or something that's been there. Because you're double dipping, you're raising the rate, and it says you raise the tax too. Let's give, let's give some consideration to the taxpayers for those that want to get the money, but thank you.
Thank you, Orge. Mark Matney?
All praise to the Lord, your Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I heard you all talk about the elderly and disabled program. And I guess all the supervisors here know obviously we're revenue and cost here. So I wanted to speak to try to help those elderly and disabled people. Right before I left office, I went to supervisors and got a minimum rate of forty-four thousand. But for y'all, so good.
Well, we have, we actually have to say it later, yeah. We got a.
No, I don't mean the tax rate, I mean the minimum that, yeah. Okay, well, I don't know how that compare, how you feel that compared to Winston County, but board voted to move theirs to forty-four thousand dollars. Hundred thousand, uh, net will, many, net will. The other thing is, the most important thing I wanted to hear tonight is about the elderly and disabled is, when I was commissioner, I would have a ninety-three-year-old little lady come in there. Oh, I didn't know nothing about the deadline. They didn't either open their mail, or sometimes they were late paying their payments. And I got to discovering that, and think about it, if you get hurt on a motorcycle, you're not going to get no compensation. So all of a sudden, you're disabled and it's you. What are you going to do? I mean, you don't get no elderly and disabled in this county, it's you. And I had to deal with people like this all the time. So I finally did my research and board sets the date. And I had my board move the date to November the twentieth, which is tax day. So if they came in there on November the twentieth, we did their elderly and disabled, and then we backed it up, fixed, you know, gave them credit for it. But you need to think about, I mean, you guys can change that. That's something you have to try to do in the program, it's set by the board. And I, that is a big help. I mean, not only do you have these elderly that don't know to get in by May or forget to do it. Like I said, you've got people that get hurt there in the middle of the year. And they're just stuck. And think about it, if little old lady don't get her, get her discount, or the guy that wrecked on the motorcycle won't get the discount. When the fall payment comes and they can't make the payment, then they're paying interest on it. So it just keeps adding up. So I really encourage you all, if they looked at and set the, uh, due date for the application. Is your tax day long ago, is it November twenty? So that's what we set our. Now, uh, as far as the budget, I, I haven't heard. If you've got, I don't know if you've got any bonds or savings account or any extra money anywhere. In Winston County, we call it reserves. If you have any of that money, uh, in order not to raise the taxes, can we, can we move that money into revenue? And the other thing is, I haven't heard anything about the carryover. I don't know about Russell County, but Winston County, they've been running, they've been running over four billion every year in carry. Yeah, it'd be nice, but I haven't heard anybody say anything about each county taking the carryover. You may have some money there. And I just thought, you know, I want to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our combined, combined financial network is eighty thousand. No, I was talking about where the Russell County Department or the elderly and disabled, the combined financial network will be on the show, I would say eighty thousand. That's the network. Right, right. I was just, they were looking for the number, that's eighty thousand. Yes, let's. Thirty. Okay, uh, thank you, thank you, sir. Peter Hicks?
Hello, I'm here, um, just basically to address a general thing. I'm going to share you all a story. And I'm hoping if we're doing this, maybe we all learn something, everybody here, not just you. But you all at this moment have the heart to. This, this little story I'm going to tell you, maybe hopefully will put a seed of thought in your mind as you're making these decisions. You're doing them in our daily lives that we need. Because it taught me a lot. See, I'm a beekeeper. And God, it's a God-given gift to me. And for some reason, he chose me to do it. And I'm going to tell you, it's taught me more in my life than my whole experience. And there's a lot to be learned. Once you understand a honeybee colony, it, it's nature's model of life. It, it, it honestly is. And I'm going to explain that to you as quickly as I can, so I don't run you down. Basically, what I'm going to try to explain to you is a honeybee colony is a unit. Across the county is a unit, just like the state and the counties are a unit. Just like this state is tied to everything in the United States. But each individual entity would consider to be a bee hive. Basically, it's a bee hive. All we have to do, and all the bees do, they have two main goals, three main goals, but two of them are the most important in their life. And I've learned this directly, watching them, working with them, seeing them. But they all live as one unit, as one unit. And they have two major goals in their, in their, in their existence. And that is number one, to survive. Number one. Number two, they're here to prosper. If they don't prosper, they don't survive. It's just simple as that. A honeybee colony can't prosper for whatever reason, whatever entity, whatever parasite, whatever plane happens to it, it can't survive. And their third major priority is to reproduce. They have to make more to keep the colony surviving, which is tied to, to number one. So basically, what is kind of an order, and, but the bees, that's their only goal. No matter what they're doing, no matter, their only goal is for that colony. That's all they do. Everything they do, they don't step out on their own and they don't make. It's just like an election, or just like anything else. You see a swarm hanging in a tree, they have to make a decision. And they send out a hundred bees, maybe two hundred, to search somewhere for them to make a new home. And if one comes back and says this, and one comes back and says that, and one comes back and says that. Will they go back and make research? They, they'll send a group of another twelve bees to this location, that location, that location, whatever they do. But they don't argue over it. They don't fight over it. They come back together and then as a general consensus, through the whole unit, they're a bee hive, they make a decision. That decision depends on their drive. That is all they strive. If they don't pick the correct location, the correct home to go into, then they don't have a chance. So they, that is a very important decision. Anyway, a community, a city, and with family, it's all the same, it's all much smaller shit. What I, what I'm trying to get to here is the decisions that we all make affect the colony. Whatever that is, it needs to make us prosper. It needs to make us survive, and it needs, needs to make us grow. Those three top priorities, things, any decision that we make that affects us all, or affects our family, or affects whatever the bee, truly need to consider those. What, what are, what are we, you know, is this analyzing? Is this going to make everything better? Is this going to do anything? Lastly, being a beekeeper, I love my hives, I love my, I love my, I love it, I love it. I mean, I, it's God-given, I believe. But I got sick. And I couldn't take care of my bees, so I. See, I'm the victim, I'm the protector of the hive. That's what I do. That's my job. But I got sick, and I'm not able to take care of them. And we know what happened. The beekeeper got separated from their hives. Sixty percent of my hives died. That, they got separated from their bees. I'm here to tell you that I mainly came tonight to explain. God, God be with you. We never expect ourselves to be there a few, but we need to consider all those things as we make decisions.
Thank you so much. Cheryl Vance?
Evening, everybody. I am here not only on my and my family's behalf, but I'm also here because of my customers. I have customers, and each and every one of your businesses. We talk about everything at our auctions. At the beginning of the auction, I always make sure that I get up in front of them and I let them know what's going on in the county. A lot of them, some of the, some of them don't understand, uh, about the budgets and why their property taxes are going to be. Some of them come to our auction because they are trying to make a couple extra dollars if they can during the virtual store that. Because that's all the money they're going to get for a couple of trips. They won't come here because they don't think they're listening. That's one of the biggest issues, they don't think they're listening. Now, I'm in District One, Andrew is my supervisor. And as a District One resident, I have total faith and absolute trust in you. And also in Nate, as my brother. I know that, I know where they stand. I know where they're going because they let me know. There are places, I know there has to be places where we can play. I've worked for general contractors for the past thirty years. I've worked in the county. I know there are hard places that need to be cut some time. I understand that we will probably have an increase in our property taxes. But our property tax is being increased along with the assessment, the assessment I got. And I did my due diligence and I went and had it reassessed again. It still went up. But that increase along with a property tax increase from the county is going to be phenomenal for us. And if you guys really need to, make sure that you're looking at every single line item. And making sure that everything is in there that needs to be in there. There's got to be somewhere that we can cut something, somewhere. Need help with that? But this is also coming from my customers as well. Because like I said, they're, you know, they're coming, they're selling things, you know, they're pulling stuff out of their homes to sell to our other customers, just so they can go off to the virtual store. And that is no bomb. That is an absolute. So, like I said, I have full faith in Andrew and Nate, so I hope that the rest of you follow suit with that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Cheryl. Okay, is anybody else want to speak that's not signing the sheet? Anybody? I'm going to give everybody an opportunity. Okay. Yeah, I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing this time, and, uh, anything to say, right? Long Road, South Carolina Road, you want to go ahead and speak and let everybody know what we're going to do? I will do this, I will. As the ones that were here here in the last, for me, all were here. Here. This room is hard to deal with. But.
But as we sat here Monday night, and as you can look up on the screen, these are the exact same numbers that we were looking at. And based off of, you know, what the county had coming in, we went back to base, and what the five issues or the five major budget items that we were looking at. Of course, you know, again, I hate to be repetitive, but I've got the region, we had the regional jail, foster care, the CSA program, and the county operations as far as the inflationary costs, you know, due to electricity, employee health insurance, property insurance, facility insurance, et cetera, gas and the rest, everybody had spoken about. Because those costs not only affect y'all, but it also affects the operations. We looked at ways to cutting, you know, operations that we have, you know, we've done multiple things over the years. We have consolidated our trash, we have consolidated our LHA, we, you know, worked on landfill, on things that we could do in different operations. And again, the next one is Russell County Transfer Station, and increases. Uh, we're looking at one hundred twenty-five seven thirty-five. But at the end, the school board, we're looking at a, a combined that actually got, we actually had a new, it had went from around seven hundred twenty thousand, now it's down to five oh eight four oh one. Now, also in the budget that I had opposed to, uh, the board, it also had a ten percent decrease across all the departments. What y'all gotta remember, the, the county is made up of multiple funding components. Majority of federal, state, local costs, and local. Uh, these are the funds that Eric needs to fund. Now, from the constitutional, from the school board, they're appropriated majority by the state, by the feds, and what our local share is. The same way as the constitution officers. These constitution officers are not paid by the county, they're paid by the state. Same way as the teachers, they're so few, are paid by the state. These increases that come down, these three percent increases or whatever the raise is, is enacted by law. So it's paid by the, what we have to do is take care of what is on the county force. In my staff, like I said, I've got forty full-time, forty-four part-time, and that's a very big margin, taking care of four hundred and seventy-six square miles. But as we have worked over these last two weeks to get these numbers more firm, and, and look at the ways to cut costs, look at ways to cutting ten percent out of non-situal employees, non-contractual grants, federal or state, what our share is, it, we have looked at, tried to reduce it by ten percent. Now, when you look at this budget for what we got up here, I got one point six four eight two seventy-six. Now, that has changed as of four thirty today. Now, what we did, we have been focusing, hyper focusing on the regional jail. And we've been working with legislators, we're on the phone with local legislators this morning. We were on the phone today with the regional jail. We've been on the phone with them for the, almost the last two weeks, trying to get these, uh, uh, done. One of the things that, working with the regional authority is, the problem is, what Russell County feels, we have thirteen, twelve other counties that has to agree with what we're saying. So that's kinda difficult. It involves multiple legislators, multiple districts to be able to come together and say, okay, this whole region is going to move in one direction. So what they did today, at, you know, uh, Wilmore Field, and the, the delegates did, they, they went to the, uh, the highness director for the state, they've been to the governor's office, had conversations. One of the things that we did do, and we did look at and got reduced was the regional jail, now, as. When we have the last meeting, our base, based off the assessment of the total aggregate, what we increased from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-four basis, it increased four hundred sixty-eight million, eight hundred ninety dollars and twenty-two cents. So again, back to our base, you know, we have the land use to come into a, a net value of nine point seven four three. What that did, that brought the sixty-three cents on hundred, which is our current tax rate, down to forty-eight point two three. That is a dollar per dollar move, within the one percent for the code of G. Now, get to that base is what we are saying, that can we could live with this? We could have lived with the two point four million dollars, we did, we could have done. But when the regional jail stepped in with the five hundred eighty thousand, we got it reduced, it's about four thirty this season, down to three hundred and three. Uh, the foster kid program, the CSA, that's mandatory. We have no choice. Either we pay it or they take it out of your sales tax, one way or another, you will pay this. So what I'm trying to get to between what was the regional jail increase, what the DSS program is, inflationary cost, which is external, the transfer station, that's in our operations, based off of contractual operations, we have to take our trash, the blunt hole. This is the increase in the, the tons, the contract amounts per the contractors to be able to get it out of the county, is what the citizens want. So, and then with the school board. These are the five components that we have for it. We have worked with them, we got the two hundred and eighty thousand dollar reduction today, just in the regional jail costs, which actually brought our requirement down now, get back to base, and take care of these five line items at fifty-six on hundred. So that's where we're at today. So at the discretion of the board supervisors, we're looking at regional jail, contractual, foster kids, mandatory, inflationary costs, I think we'll say it, AEP. That was the majority of the costs, it wasn't insurance, it was electric, electrical costs. Same way y'all went up to a thousand dollars, seven hundred, eight hundred in a household, these buildings go up too. We have put every control, every monitoring system, shut off the lights, oh, we're not here to turn off the lights to save, save electricity. We're looking at other things, disposal, contraction, we have to pay it to get it out. So, and then the school board increases, which was five oh eight four one, for a total amount of, of one point three. What we did in the week, we started, if you remember, when you go back and look at the videos, we were at two point two million. Now we're at one point three. So we narrowed the million dollars down of what it's required. But these five items that we have, we wanna have to pay. We have no other choice. Contractually, we're obligated, or they'll take it from the sales tax. So, uh, right now, based off these five items, at the discretion of the board supervisors, to get back, to meet their contractual obligations, what the number comes out to be, not me, is what, that's just what the numbers are, at fifty-six on hundred. Now what does that come out to? Um, a, in, it's good in theory, it's good on paper, but how does that affect me at my house? You know? Uh, of course, you know that we build twice a year. Now, if I bring up the, uh, the ratio that we have got, that calculates. Okay. So right now, at this fifty-six on a hundred, we estimated different ranges based off the old tax rate of what you're currently paying on your tax side. For a twenty-five thousand dollar house, your previous liability was one fifty-eight. Based off of our average, which was thirty-six point two three, as y'all have seen, this is already with the department tax. The new rate fifty-six, the tax liability went to one ninety, which is a thirty-three dollar increase per year, built twice a year. We, Russell County, we build real estate every May and November. So that would be divided into the same way. Now, what I've got in red here, and I hope you can see it, the, the houses in, when we look at the twenty-two thousand four hundred twenty-four parcels and houses and structures, this was the range from one hundred to two hundred four thousand dollars. That was the majority of the twenty-two thousand, that was the price range of houses with the increases and with, uh, as far as the tax liability. So we went from, a house that went from a hundred thousand to a hundred thirty-six, thirty-six percent increase. It went from six thirty to seven sixty-two, which is a hundred thirty-two dollar increase, twice a year, built twice. Hundred thirty-two divided by two. So that would be the tax liability impact per half. Now, if you get up into the two hundred four thousand dollar range, it, it goes up to one ninety-seven over the year. So you're looking at a hundred dollar increase per half, over a six month period. So now, if you get into really good ones, you know, four fifty to six twelve, of course, you're into the six hundred. But this is, this is the way it will transpose at the street, based off of what your assessment comes in. Now, as you look at this, again, back to these numbers right here, that's before the board of supervisors. We have to set the tax rate to be able to get the full stuff completed. As, we, like I said, we build twice a year. So, uh, it's imperative that we do this, and instead of the discretion of the board supervisors, do what we're gonna move forward with on these five lineups here. And that's with cuts, reductions, negotiation, dropping over a one point one billion dollars over a week in reduction. And back to the regional jail, just what happened today in the delegates and the press. They were, they, they could not, Russell County alone could not make that decision. So they had to have a majority vote, so they had to go out, have the thirteen counties, and reach out to everyone today that sat on that board, and everyone had to agree to unanimously, or a majority, to be able to move this money down. And they did. Because every other county like us, and Mr. Manning had mentioned Washington County, ours went up thirty-six. Theirs went up on average, I cannot speak, around sixty. So it, it's, it's hard. But here's what we have cut down, reduced the cost to own these five lineups. And it's, as far as that we could legally go down to. So at the discretion of the board supervisors, just read all of your table.
Okay, thank you. Well, uh, do I have anything, any thinking?
Yeah, since I'm on the regional jail, I'd like to say, we're working, it's guilty, I guess, feeling down, civic down, as I perceive today. But, uh, we found some things in there, we, even though we got an adjustment today, damn, uh, it, it's not what we need to make. We're carrying a very heavy reserve. And it appears to me, the way I read our policy, throughout our management policy, that we can't do anything about it right now. We've got four meetings in the paper. And that will probably initiate some, some questions to us. I think we probably do want anything substantial that what we got is driven or driven by, like the profession. We're gonna pursue this, and we're here. So what I think we could do, we, we have to take this. So, you know, if you tell me a fifty-six cents is what it takes, that's what I would propose. But, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm there, there's body else, my taxes, my assessment, almost forty-nine percent. And when I calculate my taxes, it increases thirty-five percent of taxes on policy. Still, even though it went up, it's still not as much of my interest, it tells me to take less than this. So I'm not gonna complain. But I think we could set a rate now, because we're gonna have to set a rate, it's actually, it's a problem. I mean, where else should we be?
We don't want our assessment, we don't, we don't, we're comparable with every other county, helping suppress it. That's why we're trying to get the right thing. You want, if you was to go sell your house, based off the assessment, I can actually, you know, many of them that we've looked at, at the board's organization, you know, some of them we offer, you know, we'll give you what's on here, and then they'll turn this thing. Because you want your assessment on your house, but like I said, you're in the last board meeting, for, you know, lines of credit, if you're gonna sell it, for housing insurance. You really want a firm, accurate, you know, appraisal. You know, and Michelle, she said she went out there and she got her appraisal, and they came in around the same. So these, these are the real. We tried to push down everything that we could, contractually, we fought it contractually, to get it down as far as we could. And then we ran into this. We dropped it a bean one in over a week, and I don't think, we worked all weekend long. We were on the phone with the legislators, we're on email, we're in long conversation. And it's, it's hard, it is hard. Governor promises, legislators, board supervisors, this is not done. But even if you do, even if we do, I gotta be realistic, even if we get rid of the three hundred thousand, it goes to zero, I still got these other issues with CSA, the tracks, AEP, still there. Each one, it's solid, it's firm, and, you know, it, it's a difficult time.
What I, what I would, we might be able to do, we have some success in the next few minutes, with the regional jail. Come back, second, adjust.
You could do it legally, yes, but it would be a, you'd need.
We can adjust it now, so what was stated in the first half.
Or, or do.
Well, it's a second half, when it should be, so.
It's hard. It's hard. Okay. Y'all look, we discussed, and we're real successful. So I leave it. It is, it's got you down fine. That's pretty good. Thirty-three thousand line items, federal state, you know. That's what it all amounts to. Line up. Still not that big, really, yet.
Fifty-six cents per hundred is what it takes, the inflation, the tax rate. Fifty-six cents per hundred. With the understanding that we get further reductions with the regional check, that we come back on second half, do adjustments down. Get it down.
Yes, sir. Okay, uh, we have a motion on the table, do we have a second? Okay, we don't have a second. Is anybody on board, happy to have a question? Keep it.
So, Mr. Loester, do you have a list of things that you could add, you see the news now, though?
Yeah. If you, if you look at your budgets, like I said, on the budget of details, um, as I mentioned during the last board meeting, you know, other than, you know, taking a look at the employees, employee benefits, and what was in contractual services here. and what was in contractual services here, I, we, we automatically, without reserve, without anything, and we cut every department ten percent, just straight across the board.
Well, now, I know last time I asked for three thousand for the IDA, did you put that out?
No, ma'am, I did not, it is in there. It's still in there, that's up to the discretion of the board.
I kind of feel like maybe they need to do the, I don't know, maybe, you know. And, um, let me see, I was going to ask another thing too, we've got here, um, on this, I've got two lineups.
No, go.
Is that all right, Chairman?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, on here, I see Landfield Projects, twenty-five thousand, why don't we do that?
That is to increase the, the, uh, tank capacity for the Ledge up.
Okay.
That's what part of the DQ, we're fulfilling that, yes.
I was thinking that was on something else.
The last one you asked me was on the recyclable one, that's what we have to meet to twenty-five percent, this is the DQ expansion.
Okay, and then also our bank fees, what is that?
Bank fees.
Fifteen thousand dollars, it was nineteen thousand eighty-seven dollars, four, twenty thousand sixty-three and twenty-three. Is that in non-departmental?
Are you into the treasures?
I don't know, I'm just wondering about it, it's just something that I could highlight, I don't know. Says non-departmental.
Which, which scenery is it under?
Page fifty-seven of sixty-two. While he's looking that up, is, does anybody else have any trauma to that safety pass at IDA?
Well, I can probably speak on that. Uh, I know we're going to incur, with the industries that we're talking to right now, we're going to incur some additional legal costs. Uh, this is kind of like an estimate, of course, having that in there to be able to handle some of that. I know, I know it's going to be pretty expensive on some of those, on a couple of those different projects that you all have knowledge of.
Is that going for them, though? I guess that's, that's what computers need, because, yeah, we have over the board.
Well, the IDA is a separate corporation.
I know, that's why I'm first coming home.
Yeah, and, and they'll, they'll have to, they'll have to have their own legal.
Can they not provide that, though? I mean, because that is kind of their, you know, they are our industrial authority, so, I mean, that, you know.
Well, I mean, they, they'll provide their own legal subsidies when it comes to the negotiations with the two industry. You know, as far as that, it's going to be fairly, you know, expensive, I'm sure, and it's going to benefit everybody.
Well, it will, and it'll benefit the county, because that is their job. And also, you know, they, they will be, they will be doing these things, and it's still true.
We're the ones who have ta, uh, the tax, us is, we're the tax. Us going to have to do what we, we talked about as far as helping with the tax situation in the county is going to benefit the citizens greatly. If God blesses us with this opportunity, no doubt. We just want to make sure that, you know, that's covered, uh, because those negotiations are ongoing. And we just want to make sure, whatever investment we have in that with our IDA, because we're, we're not safe, we're actually together.
We're anticipating some very complex negotiations.
It's very complex.
I mean, I understand that, but you.
They might have to hire outside legal companies. So if, if we hire, it's no different than they hire, as far as the outside legal companies. It's going to be able to specialize in this vehicle, that's kind of, so it can either come from us, go ahead and pay it, or it can come from you, they can come to us and request it, and it could be simply more, but, you know, hopefully, hopefully that'll cover it, uh, with what we're doing, with the diligence right now, as far as what we're doing. So basically, I think, basically explaining what that, what that means.
I just figured, like, you know, because they are their own, I think, like.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to suggest, if I hear it from the legislature, uh, please, 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 if they can be, I don't know, please, I don't know.
I, I agree. I already feel horrible about any kind of taxes that are given, because I, I get calls, and I know y'all do. That people are deciding on your life deal, the grocery deal, and the next, and it's not okay. You know, we, we really got to do what we can do to, to help people, and I mean, if it's cutting that out, you know, and I know that's only a small portion of it, but, you know, that's something that we could do, I'm.
What is the county's rate, two hundred and seventy-four dollars per month?
Right now, hundred and seven.
Hundred and seventy-four, um, thousand, right?
That's, that's a growth, yes.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's seasonally, so we can find another thing. I mean, I'm just, I'm calling it anything, because like I said, I keep getting these calls, and it breaks my heart. I didn't, I, you know, I got in this, it's a cost.
That hundred thousand is in that house, it's, so, yes.
There you go.
So there's.
See, that was, that was not my powers.
Without even doing anything, so, move this along, uh, the next motion is forty-seven point five cents. Not going to split ours, that breaks even from last year, plus a tenth of a pin. So, uh, if we can get a second, we can discuss that.
I'll give you a second on that.
Okay, yeah, I have.
All right, if, if we need more money, and we've got two months here to work on this budget, then we can come back in June, and we can increase the second act of the pass. But if we need tax tickets to go out, we send them out based off last year's number, uh, basically, what we're counting on.
Start with that, then if we needed to increase.
I, I would rather increase and go forward as to go back.
Problem is, in fact, second act, try to get, uh, to get it up there. By force, if I can, it is contractual obligation by law. Well, from my perspective, I made, I made an obligation for our system to take care of the state. And if we drop that low, we need to find, that's it.
School dogs, start off.
Miss Tare, just, just to clarify, you're on, you were talking about the bank fees that were in the non-departmental for fifteen thousand. If you look at what we're required to do, that, these are audited numbers, as you see in the previous year of twenty-two, we spent twelve thousand, seven twelve, twenty-three, nine, twenty, twenty, and nineteen, I did reduce it down to fifteen. Why it's in the departmental, that is, services like clerk's offices for machines, for bank fees, treasurer's office, it's non-departmental. It's, uh, that type of, yeah, credit card machines to transaction and stuff. That is correct, some of it, yes, but we've got equipment in there that we, we have to maintain, that's correct, service freedom, yes.
Okay, uh, I've got a motion, and what was that number again? Forty-seven and a half, and I got a second five. Miss Tare?
You got six.
That's what I, yeah, I thought.
Andrew made it, Andrew made the motion.
So we're in discussion?
Yes.
On my counter, it's eight and a half cents less than what it takes to pay the bills. Amounts of about a billion, a hundred and eighty. Each cent is worth a hundred and seventy-four, three thirty. You do that, Mr. Chair.
Can we, can we operate if you approve everything?
Forty-seven and a half cents. I, it takes fifty-six, pay all the bills, fifty-six minus forty-seven and a half, is eight and a half cents. And each cent is worth a hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars in taxes. So that's a million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, a hundred and five dollars, under what it pays to pay.
Okay, you're right. Because you're asking. So can't be doing that, one point three seven. One point two eight one thirty-two. Yeah. That, that's been changed yesterday, this, this one right up here, this is, this is contractual, right here. This is kind of, since we've got the reduction, it is written.
So, so what's this number? Why is this a hundred and fifty-four cents? Why is this one hundred and fifty-four cents? Why don't have a paper with it, a hundred thousand dollars less than that?
Is that, I'd have to.
That's how you pass it with. Well, I'm just saying.
I know these are far numbers.
That number, a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for a hundred, or a thousand dollars, that's not, that's not the number. Or the amount. That can't, that can't be a hundred and two, one point four million dollars, that's more than three, seven, seven more. Regardless, regardless, there's still potential for some of these requests to go down, if you're on the regional jail. Probably on the C and D wish, also, I would, those things that, based on my understanding, foster, based on family kids in close.
About foster, the CSA, it been at like nine thousand, three hundred and six dollars, I think, between the Monday meeting and Friday meeting? Yeah.
Yes.
What, what, what is that, that just, we got any more, or we adjusted, or?
Out the CPMT, based off the kids that came in. I was trying to take that and roll it out based off the number of months, so, if you know, this is a month by month.
Yeah, I was just confused, because it changed in my four days, I wanted to make that.
And it, and an extra kid goes in the extra month, one child, CSA program, right, for ten thousand, twelve thousand per. Now, and, yes, and you have eighty-five kids in those, correct, as of today.
Is that going to just constantly, it moves?
Constantly moving.
Hey, so what you're doing.
It's not going down.
You're based off, well, we don't go down, uh, but you're based off the current dates.
Yes, I have, I, this, we, we've been, like I said, in the office, Friday, we're going down, however, but, but, as we move these numbers, I think we got eighty-five kids, running from ten to twelve, one kid may take ten, one kid may take twelve, but you will pay one way or the other. So we're trying to get it, and I'm, I'm being conservative, because, uh, Alice will tell you, and of course Rebecca, you got eighty-five. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to push these numbers down, just based off the numbers that we got.
The, the legislative commissioners that we have in front of us from last week and today, says that, uh, we're asking for each department to do a ten percent reduction, did we get that?
It wasn't really of an ask, it was a mandatory.
Did you get it?
But we just made it work, uh, fifty cents.
So the department's understanding, is that?
They will, it gives the other. That's in non-departmental traction.
Okay, uh, I'll call for a vote, and, uh, if we don't care, let's just raise our hands, because I'm telling you, uh,
Everybody raises their hand. We'll, we'll delay, Tare, to get you a moment. Okay, all right, I apologize for that. Thank you, thank you, let's just wait until he didn't want to discharge. Still need to show a hand. One, one, let me say something before we take this vote, since we're still in discussion. Everybody understands too, I think, you know, people that have actually called me understand that we've got to pay our bills. I mean, that's critical, because if not, and I'll tell you, when I first got elected, the county was one with forty million dollars debt, and we was operating on a rate. Our bond rating is, for these new industries we got coming in, we have to have a start. We have to have buyers, now, if not, they're going to look at this county and say, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not doing that. I mean, I'll tell you how critical a bond rate is, for us to be able to get out of the tank, to get, and get to that good bond rating, it gets credibility. It gets good credibility with our respective lenders and borrowers, that, our county didn't have to get deeper and deeper and deeper into the same because of the bond rate. So we want to do a water project, and we want to bring clean water for PSA without a bond rate, can't get the thing. And everything depends on being able to pay our bills, being able to prepare, keep what we agreed to pay them. Keep the, and I, I appreciate our representatives looking at everything, trying to make the cuts if we can. Uh, I mean, our job's not to make their cuts, so I understand that, but they have, they have sacrificed a lot of the cuts, so we can drive this number down, but we've got to pay our bills, we don't pay our bills, uh, on a time basis. It's almost, to me personally, that, I'm not talking about nothing board, it's almost a malfunction, because I know, do the right thing, and I don't do it, that's neglect on my part. So we've got to pay our bills, we got to pay them on time, and everybody says, well, have you cut, have you cut, yes, absolutely. We cut when we first got elected, helps to get us out of those, the tank, and now we've continued to cut, and we, we didn't anticipate all the things that we've had to deal with, we didn't create problems, I want everybody to know that, you do know that. The inflation, the cost of groceries, the cost of fuel, you know, everything that we're all dealing with. And now we got hit with this new assessment, it's not just us, it's all the counties, but I will tell you, we're working tooth and nail to try to drive these costs down. We've had, we've had some pretty tough conversations that they probably didn't like a lot of what we had to say, we said it, and we, I talked to the governor, we talked to our representatives, about making sure that nobody carries a lot of money, and they can distribute it back to the county, so we can do this, do our job effectively. So with that said, I'm going to call for a vote. Go ahead.
Mr. Lester, put forty-seven point five in your report, you'll see what you can vote.
I was a little burned, I remember, so, so if I go a little bit, that changes. See forty-seven five. The one point four nine eight two ninety one.
Sure, okay. Million, four hundred and ninety-three thousand.
Four nine eight, one four nine eight two nine.
So it is almost a million.
Anybody else, have any discussion? I'll call for the vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Fifty cent you're being sixty two or sixty five.
When I, I'll second the motion just with respect for. I know we've discussed, we've talked about this. So, from where I can tell, it looks like the, the one, two, three, five, five line item that we're quibbling about, is that right?
Yes.
The chance those would go down too, is a possibility, but we need to get, there's still room in here, the other, the rest of the thousand fifty line items. We're all like this, I said, every department, treasurer, revenue, board. You know what? Buy thinner paper. Red ink, print on both sides. I don't know what the answer is, because you got to get it down. Do not race back to extend the grant, or citizens, this paper.
That includes, that includes the one staff plus the three percent of the non-SOQ and a two percent increase for the insurance, which is the same account. So, yes. Now, I have not, that's still another variable that we risked and will take. That, that will probably be in, uh, we have to be able to get the traction.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I call.
Alright. Alright, uh, Ms. Dye made motion, fifty cents.
Still a million dollars.
Mr. Kaiser seconded, uh, all o, all in favor, probably raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay.
Got none number?
I can't make the motion. No, I'm, I'm stuck. It's hard. Hopefully what we will be able to do in my original motion would be to reduce it. Once we know, we can't, we can't jiggle these numbers to suit ourselves, we have to know the revenue is going to be there. That's why we've been, had, we've been reducing it three thirty until they call us out.
He's just being.
Sixty five.
That's a good question, um, how much are we going to carry over in our bank balance from this year to next? Their total.
Carry over from what?
This year to next year. Oh, we only, we'll call reserve, whatever we want to call it, whatever amount of money is in our bank.
Right.
We're not using up this year, what do we have left?
Well. And see right now, if you, if you look at your budget on page eighty nine and sixty two, we're down, and that is moving through, because y'all got to remember, the budget that y'all set, you've added a lot of line items, like the SCBA's, that was three hundred and almost ninety thousand dollar line items, that were down into, I'm down to forty five thousand four ninety six, and that's going to be the end. I mean, that's, that's about what it is, but I, I don't want to get out into the weeds, there is no reserve, legally there's no reserve, so, uh.
Somehow every year, once we, we know, you tell me we don't have anything, we're breaking the buck.
I, I can, I can, I, I can show you every line item that's in the county books, there is no legal reserve line.
I want to ask.
No, i, if they're.
You're saying that all we have at the end of the year is forty five thousand dollars.
Okay, guys, just be respectful, man, we'll, let us, let the board members have the discussion.
At the end of the year, we only have forty five thousand dollars, year to year.
Based off the budget right now, what y'all are going to expand, you're looking at forty five, but you, thousand dollars remain based off of what y'all have initially approved and proved throughout the year period, that's, that's it. Now, if you take a look, I've, as I've got up here, you know, this is one hundred percent of what the treasurer have, has in fund balances and cash balances, right here. This is as of end of the March. This, right here, what y'all got to understand, you have fund balances of all of these right here, as y'all can see. In. The only one that you have as far as cash in the balance, we have eighteen million in cash, that is correct, but this board supervisors does not have autonomy or authority to touch federal or state money. Now, the only thing they have in general fund is this March thirty first, this four point eight million period, that's the run of the county. This is one hundred percent reported to the Department of Treasurer, Department of Tax, there's no hidden line items, there is no big reserves, guys. It just don't happen. Now, the confusion was on, into the cash balances of these money markets, and I'm go, I'm going to go into them. If you look to the far right, it says restricted. That means the board supervisors don't have access to it other than the programs they're designated for. In this bun, money market account that we got at three point nine two, as I go back into the cash balances, what makes that up is the sheriff in state trips, the dire program, cold growth, you can only use it for road. Covid nineteen, American Rescue, Opia seven, C Core Partnership, Wellspring, Dixon Russell County Recovery, Valley Heights, Special Welfare, Housing Fund, and the Russell Fitness, et cetera. These are restricted, the only thing that the board supervisors can do, that is reported to the feds and the state, four point eight five four, that's in your general fund right now. But that has to take care of every monthly expenditure, and if we have, as far as the schools, that includes all the school funds, as you can see highlighted in yellow, when, uh, if anything comes as far as cash in the bank, through these accounts, and I wish the treasurer was here, she, she's very good at explaining this. We have to, sometimes we have to hold invoices and not pay them until the cash balance is deals. What y'all got to realize, what is in the budget, you can say that a billion dollars, I keep, I keep telling y'all, billion dollars, it don't matter, what you got in cash to pay the bills is it. That, that's why you have, that's why our budgets run on what they call a cash basis. We can only, I can only pay one bill right now today, as, as of last week, the board, we've got down to three hundred thousand dollars in cash balance totally. As, as the, uh, real estate that was coming in for the pay one, there's a lot of people that paid, there's a lot of companies that paid prepaid, there's a lot of companies that, you know, or people that have escrow accounts that, that'll pay on time by, you know, escrow accounts, et cetera, and we did build that backup. But as far as what we got in the bank and what they have access to, take a look on the cash balances, what the restricted accounts are, and this is, like I said, reported to the state and fed, I don't care how y'all make it up. So, it is what it is. There is no hidden accounts, this is one hundred percent transparency, this is every dollar that we got, every dollar we got, unless the treasurer got one and ain't even going to be facetious, because I know how conservative she is. We have to account for every dollar in every county, in every fund, in every month. There's none, that's why, you know, again, let's get back, you know, to the budget. What can we do and what can't we do? I can't pay American Rescue, I can't take, you know, opiate money and pay and give a fuck. This war can't either, even if they wanted to, they make a motion right now. Period.
But many of those restricted accounts are going to pay the bills, the bills, the next one, correct?
We have to do that by law.
Yeah. So, general fund is not all the money that we have, we've got bills going through all kinds of different things, restricted departments, unrestricted. Restricted department bills go through the line item. So, you know, you're looking at a whole scheme of things, but I want to know how much in general fund is not obligated to end the year, because those restricted funds can't touch, but they are obligated to spend if they go to it. I get that, can't touch them, but you're making it sound like that general fund is all we have to spend for the rest of the year, it's not. That's plus all the restricted funds, they go to the things they paid for, that's what's in this budget, right?
That is correct, but.
So there's got to be, it's four hundred and forty five thousand dollars, I would, I would.
No, that, that's the particular end of the balance, after everything is done, and we come to all the payrolls.
Based on the budget.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's the end of your balance.
But what is the number of our budget to actually cover revenue in the general fund at the end of the year, not restricted costs?
Right now, based off what y'all expanded, what is projected, based off the budget you set, plus the additional, so you're looking for forty five thousand. That's if it timing on it is correct and through the budget. What you got to understand, that, these, through these accounts.
We started the year at zero.
No.
Forty five thousand dollars.
Right now, what we're projecting at the end of the year is about forty five thousand, and to be honest with you, we lucky not going.
So, we started the year with zero in the bank, and now you're going to have forty five thousand.
Your cash balance is not your budget, you got to understand.
What's our cash balance?
Our ca, your cash balance right now is, is right now seven million four fifty one sixteen, that is at March thirty first, which we have to account for. Now, what does that pay for? That pays for the schools, all the county employees, payroll, everything that comes through.
But that's not the only thing.
But it's a cash balance, I, if you take it out of fund, you still have that.
Because you got restricted accounts, just like casino fund, they pay for that too.
That, that's in that seven point four five.
That's in our cash balance?
Yes, that's in your cash balances, we got that money upfront, it, it put into the cash balance.
You don't put that in, in a strict.
No, no, we don't put it, that's why I said we do not, not, not casino money is not a restricted fund, because when the board supervisors did it, it is by law, it is for education. So, we, we have to supplement, y'all got to remember, y'all went up one billion, you know, in salaries last year, you know, about only eight hundred thousand dollars, so that was distributed after that. Rest went to the courts, and the rest went into, you know, the education component and the race program, so those components are already built into your budget. That's just a, you know, that's not restricted again.
First these properties that we're going to be selling on the revenue side.
I can't account for the revenue until it actually occurs by law, so until they sell, I can't account for it, because.
Mine is sold, we moved on that nine months ago.
But they have sold because the treasurer has them up for when we do our sales. That is, uh, next month.
So you can't anticipate selling a property, you know, revenue, just for somebody paying the tax.
Pretty much, because it's based off of.
That state law, that state law says.
Because you're going off a basis that this says bad.
That state law says that.
What?
You can't anticipate the sale of real estate in your revenue side, you said state law, you can't.
I can't put it into the budget until it comes to what we call earned revenue.
Well, we're sitting here with a budget revenue made up.
I got, you got to earn it before you can, I can't put it, it's just down in cash.
We can't anticipate the sale of real estate, put it in our budget revenue. So whenever you sell that, you can add that to the revenue.
That is correct, there, yes, it's.
But we've got to set a budget based off of not setting.
Or you can, or you can anticipate a range, you know what the problem is.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
But I can't account for it in these books legally until, you know, until it's up, and when it's lit, it's got to go through the treasurer's office to be able legally to be accounted.
Alright, so these, these taxes here are the same as they was last year on the revenue side, Tate and Simmons not pay anything different?
Well, see, Tate and Simmons is newly company, you got to remember.
So they don't pay taxes?
Yes, but, but they're not into a full year yet, you got to remember, taxation is on a calendar year.
So Tate wasn't down there on January one?
No.
Yeah, they were.
Yeah, they were, but not under the agreement, that's the way they, um, for the IDA.
So the IDA wants seventy thousand dollars if they make a agreement, you pay taxes for you.
You'll have to pay them, that's the IDA agreement. I know it's hard, and I know it's frustrating, it is, it, it is hard.
What's the asset value of top school?
Well, it forces into the county, so it's got not to be a play, so. Uh, I technically, I don't, I, I.
That's what we made?
Yeah.
I think we can sell.
Not get one point four of these.
I don't care what we get for, more than nothing. More than what we pay.
I agree. You can, you can do, yeah, it's, it adds up to the governing vote, but I can't account for it legally because why do you materialize?
We've got, see, budget starts June, right?
Budget starts July one.
Yep, so, that's July one, so the school, and all the other properties that we got. I think we could probably make it up. There a motion on the table?
We've had two, they both had.
Alright. Boarding the sheet, what was it, four, four eight, two, three, that, I still, that, still. This one's wrong, so, I don't know why I've got. This one's wrong too, we have one that's right, you get up on the board one?
One point three seven.
Point four eight. Two, three. Alright. That's my motion. On the cuts, sell some property.
What is your name?
One, four, eight, two, three.
Four, eight, two, three?
Yep. On the cuts, sell some property, make that.
Okay, we have a motion, four, eight, two, three. That's base.
That's base.
And, baby, we have a second. We got a second. A missed eye. Show of hands, all in favor. Oppose.
We're at eight, you mean.
Base. That's what we can't, that's you not be able to pay your bills. I'd have to take out the one point three seven, one thirty dollars. Yeah. Get back. Give one point three, almost over four million dollars.
Mr. Wester, we may progress on uh, we were talking about the, the land that's on, do not be taxed. You know, drop this. Figure out how much money revenue we can make there.
Right now, based off the A C P, we had uh pretty good. We have been through it. Uh, it's in debt parties. Uh, I think there's what. Now, he knows, he knows based off his records of, on what land we're talking about. We got some of it that are located subdivisions, et cetera. So, um, based off of monetary amount, I mean, but. Oh, oh, yeah, David. I mean, we, we said, we've met twice on this and we've worked that separately and be able to get it nailed down, you know. Definitely to a even a range, you know, it.
I use the ten percent number because that's the number that adds up. It's not, it's probably not too much. Uh, I use that as an example.
It is.
When you work through the land cards, some of them will be, that they're just not being taxed, you know, the final one. Uh, some of it, they may be being taxed, but it's showing up on the annual ticket. So they are being taxed, it's not showing up. So, there is a number, I would say, between zero and two percent. They just want to take a dig into it to find out what that real number is. It may not be that much, but it's something that makes sense. And, and so I can't say it's a needle mover to, to a dollar, whatever ticket slipped out. I mean, I bought some randomly today. And it looks like they may be being taxed because it's on the annual ticket basis. But there are some I know that are not being taxed because it's sold on, like, on that. What is that number?
See, we said stratified based off of, you know, I'm taking out much of the subdivision, those point five acres, and I'm getting the big acre. Then I go back and we have to cross-reference those tax digits, just like he's doing with P S three companies. Some of them, ones I found in mine, I was just wishing I was getting what, working out what days and what your revenue has. You know, some of our tax, like I said, the majority are gonna be in tax, but it's being aggregated and not detailed on the tax. So guys, I can't, I couldn't legally, you know, ask, give you a range. I mean, I couldn't legally put it into a budget line.
Since the letter, I did have a, I have a little post that, well, we're very popular. I'm sorry to hear that. Uh, and I know there's contractual reasons why some of this can be paid. Right now there's seven hundred twenty-one thousand dollars, seven hundred one thousand one hundred ninety-one dollars. In the budget now that we're paying PSA debt or something like that. And I know that other boards, and I've talked to other boards that agree to that. What troubles me with that is the PSA is buying water now for five dollars a ton. And they're selling that water for almost twenty dollars a ton. So they should be making money. They should be able to take on fees. The taxpayers should not be subject to this. And I know you should, contractual reasons, maybe you need to sit down with the board and say, okay, how do you take this off? How do we take it off the taxpayers and get it back to the PSA? But, cause I've talked to many of you when I found the problems with the PSA. That they are independent or they stand on their own and they don't answer the need anymore. But here we are subsidizing them to the tune of seven hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. Also, you know, from what I've been able to find out, they're collecting trash money while they're doing, they're, they're the billion agency for trash. But I don't see that in the budget without coming back to the taxpayers. Uh, I don't, I think they're, it looks like, are they keeping it or is it coming back to the taxpayers and how much money is it? So that's just some of the things I was thinking about. And, and none of that may not be able to fix anything, but something to manure is bound up on that's more. Can we sit down with PSA and say, why aren't you making? And what part of the debt can you take? Can you take some of that off? And, and, and like I said, there may be some contractual reason why you can't. But how can they buy water for five dollars a ton and sell it for twenty dollars a ton? This doesn't make sense to me. And so, but that's just, you know, that's some hope. And I know you didn't ask for that. But to the, to back to the earlier person, like, it's, it is not, probably not ten percent. To, 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 you know, the ones I bought today, some of them are. I, I, I can't, can't take away my full time job and do that. I just did some, had some downtime today and he was having a meeting today and I did some random checking. Is, some of it's in there, it's just not shown to me.
Now, just to elaborate on what I said, here is PSA. Now, as you can see, three years are posted and odd. Right now, we give five hundred forty-one thousand six hundred sixteen dollars to the PSA. Now, what that is, the PSAs were merged. And one of the things that V R A, which is a major lender on. This, not this board, previous boards made more obligations and contractual agreements forward the old uh swords free PSA combination. Those are contractual agreements that the board supervisors, previous boards, no one here has said, the old boards. And those were twenty to twenty-five years in plan. So this board inherited this debt loan. So it is contractual agreement. They have to pay it. That was the agreement by the board. Now, to get it out in V R A, actually during the consolidation, made that into the bond notes, it, it's in the agreement. So they, the board, this board, the county is responsible for those projects that the board supervisors took upon their own. And not the PSA, it said, and told the PSA to add these in over the years. So there's contractual agreements. It wasn't projects that PSA had taken on. It was what the board supervisors at that time. Contractually took a, in any case, took a total of five hundred forty-one thousand six hundred sixteen a year, as you can see, as, as we're doing it. But it's a traction.
There's a, the reason I was, how I got to the seven hundred thousand dollars, there's a, a dance or a hundred thirty thousand dollars a year. Dance or a loan, forty-nine thousand five seventy-five, there's a principal on it, which is when you have a five forty-one.
That is correct. So what's total, it's total is seven hundred twenty-one thousand.
And I know, like I said, there's contractual reasons you have to do that. But I'm saying, can we sit down with PSA and say, can we negotiate out this? And you, and you get it back? And maybe you can, but I still have trouble with. They're, they should be making money. Uh, I won't be in the fact that they, they owe people money. Now they probably collection agency to go after it. It seems like there's no accountability. So can we negotiate out of that on some other level? And maybe you can. I'm just asking.
You mentioned the date, treatment plan. Now, that agreement, in the agreement of consolidation, is left in the board supervisor. But it's actually all by the PSA because we can't keep it in the county. But one thing that we did require, bond rate. All the revenue that's available to the Virginia Resource Authority, pays that front load in the review of work. So it's actually that one forty-five is just the, the loan, but we get the rev, you know, the revenue back in the billing.
That's back in the revenues of?
Yeah, that comes back into their billing because they operate it and it comes back in and.
Can we find out what's happening to the money that we're collecting for the trash?
Now, the trash is another contractual obligation with the Virginia Resource Authority. That gives the environmental count, that was an agreement with the board to be able at the time for what? Cause when they consolidated, neither side had enough reserve, as y'all, anyone that's done water projects and fuel projects. A lender agency comes up, they require you to have at least one year of expenditures, you know, sitting there, especially within consolidation. So what the board, the board, neither board had the cash in hand. So what they did, they obligated, the board had to obligate and carry that or go into default, which would have hit our bond rating.
I saw, I didn't ask the question, right? The, what I was talking about is where a business, you know, on their, gets an invoice from the PSA on behalf of the county.
Yeah.
Is it the trash money?
That is correct.
Is that going back into the county budget or is it in the business?
That is hit, it is the county, but it is held in reserve for that big bond that the PSA did in consolidation. Does that make sense?
Not really. I figured out, but.
They didn't have the cash to be able to carry the debt load. They had the reserve. That's, that's federal state law.
How much money are we collecting on the trash?
Uh, right now, on the reserves, and they, here was the agreement, her agreement, we have discussed it with the PSA. As they get their own reserve, they're dedicating from nine to eleven thousand dollars a month off their revenue. As they get, as they start the collection backup, they're releasing it out of that account. And it's about approximately, uh, as of last month, it's about three hundred eighty thousand dollars. But as they get ten, they take ten and then release it back. So they have to build up at three eighty on their own, based off the number of loans that they have. In, through the funding agencies. R and D requires a certain percentile. Virginia Resource Authority requires a percentile. And they have to meet those requirements or they don't, they go into default.
So I just asked them that, if we find a way to look at the situation.
We are. And the operation policies, which is the other four and five, that's something that's. Yeah, it's, it's already. I know it's on the top three priority project, so.
Alright, thank you. If you might ask a question, I'll.
Thank you.
Mr. Wester, it's so much quicker to say that school, and it's not really a big thing, right?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, so what's the deal with that type of show that's coming up?
Well, as, as far as the.
I don't know how much, I don't know how.
Thing about it is on the swords creek school, we actually. They have yet until July the first. So they're carrying the insurance, all the operating costs that you can kill first of July. Uh, right now, it is no monetary impact to our side yet, but it will become an additional cost if we do not, you know, sell it. Or work with another agency as the C S B. So then we'll be giving up the insurance and the inspections and all the, the, all the operations.
Cause now we've gone through that.
We are, we're in the process.
Are they, are they dying?
Uh, well, we actually, our obligation, what we're supposed to give them per year, uh, we're taking that off, our obligation over periods of years. What we have to, that's true. We'll get, they'll have.
That would seem so.
Yeah, yeah, they'll have the job, they'll have more jobs. And I am working, helping, uh, trying to get rid of top of the world. I've got a, got a meeting this week with a potential, uh.
Got you.
No, no. No, they'll have it free. Yeah. Yeah, well.
What is your obligation, Peter? What, what, what are we giving them right now that we would not give?
We're, we're not, not giving them anything. They're gonna pay for all these grants, the plumbing. Annually, and what is it annually? I'll let you look it up. I think it's forty thousand dollars, I'm talking ahead, yes. Forty thousand a year. Yes. And that's what y'all gotta understand, you know, our regional bills do them sitting seven thousand dollars. And that even up there. So what we do, we go in and based off our demographics and what we call uh our poverty levels. We ask for slot levels on these. So as you, if you look at the other counties, we're all about the same based off the population demographics. If every one of them, at least out of the two seventy-seven, were still down to forty thousand. So. But also you gotta take that forty, then look at the houses you're gonna have to, if you pick it up, you're gonna have to add the insurance, the other people inspections, and water power.
So it's a big, you get it, I'm gonna pose opposition to that. The sword streaks will allow buildings for us.
Will be.
It's being the whole.
What, what?
Copper Creek, in my opinion, Copper Creek is a more valuable property, a more valuable location. Newer facilities, newer uh abilities, I think we get to say, that is a. Truth is, it's a decent property. We should be able to sell for a few. Generation call.
What we were able to do too, now you've kind of given update, we was able to provide, upper hook was able, and team love laces was able to provide us uh, all the revenue. That, you know, and sold the eight, all those stuff, when it come to, as fast as anything like. So all that has been clarified. And then they've got that. And they've got two estimates right now on, have to, it's gonna be about, right, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And uh, some of the work is gonna have to be done too.
Home and shelter.
Home and shelter. All the plumbing, all.
Don't worry it out. It is.
Oh, if y'all look at bottom screen here, it's the subdivision C S B. Uh, like I said, I, we come to the two seventy-seven, based off the demographics and. If y'all look at on the screen here, it's not official, CSP, uh, like I said, I, we can see it, two seventy-seven, based off the demographics and property, you know, our, our clientele. We still have to contribute forty thousand.
But given the, given the Sword Creek will. Good watch. We're getting the.
That's what we're negotiating right now.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, again, that's not in terms here, so.
It's not be a dead horse, it's keep moving. Uh, I said, I mean. Cleveland schools sold themselves to million dollars right now, which you may get, at least half million out of Dr. Creek, I'm just saying. Now, you, uh, yeah. The whole other guy. Uh. You cut basically sixty-three cents, only difference is sixty-three and forty-eight. And it's about fifty-six, which is what you requested. So I say we, uh, can't make a vote tonight. We'll have to reconvene and see, give me another week, you can cut it in half again. Let's do it on Saturday though, so I don't have to put my hand in to get back there and work. More people show up. Jimmy, this is gonna fly away.
Well. Yeah. As far as, uh, if y'all decide to delay it, to work on it, people will have to have another motion to make sure we can pass it. That was right down everything for us, you know, on schedule, let's talk what we have to do to get the votes out and.
That'll cost us any money?
Delaying it.
No. You're, you're gonna.
That's a stretch, that's. Y'all, we have to extend the tax debt.
We'll make a motion, I'm for it.
That's where I need to go, I mean, that's, that's up to the, the board membership, that's, you know, that's your pleasure, so we can.
It's a, it's a pleasure, man.
I know there's not, I know it's not, Nate. I know, and, and, you know, I appreciate the board and what we're gonna do, I, I mean, it, it is, it's been such an unprecedented year. Everybody, everybody wants to cut, 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 but everybody, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, but not be able to pay bills. I mean, I wanna make sure that we can at least pay our bills, our obligations. I mean, if, if we had a couple of CSA situations where two or three more kids come into the program, and we had to tell them we couldn't pay it, we didn't have enough. You'll have, I don't know where you're gonna run it in the base, like the federal government. Now, the bond rating, they, they're going to pay. And we got these new industries coming in, so. Well, uh.
Would you revenue this place, first part? If you have, have a rate of revenue.
If you run into. Oh, I'm sorry, if you run into a deficit, you have to take out a revenue anticipation note, it will hit your bond. And that means any, any loans that you give from the HCD, banks, any funding agency, you're going, you'll pay a high premium. Interest, yes. Right now, Russell County's got a double A bond rate. And that, and that, that's, that's burning in our loans, that's why we get the, you know, loans that we do pay.
How much is the ten percent cut that you, you proposed for the bar? How much is that?
Oh, in the dollar amount, that's, uh, I think a hundred thirty-eight thousand. One thirty-eight, eight two three. It's right, right here. You know, if I can, I can't touch the constitution officer, so I can't touch the contracts, it's, it's the other charges that have the economy, it's reduced and not used.
Can't touch the office, touch the.
I can, I, I, we did touch the department. I just can't, the constitution decision.
Yeah, yeah.
So we could, uh, meet again next week.
So, Andrew will be out of town, I'll, we, we make a motion, we'll bring in the twenty-nine, please, six P M.
Twenty-nine, that would be two weeks, so you're gonna have to stay out. Just so, unfortunately, that will get too busy. So that would be, I know the pressure of the testing right now, and. About, uh, of the eighteen.
Come on, this Friday? This Friday?
We, we.
Andrew won't be here that day either. You might not want him.
I hate to be that on Good Friday.
It is Good Friday, it is right, it's Good Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't recommend that we do anything around Good Friday. Uh, we need all the prayers and blessings we can get, so we. What about Monday, the twenty-first? That sounds.
Second makes a motion, cause I'm gonna be out of town. Friday to Saturday, so like eight days. Uh. And since we're in a discussion. If you got it me in a week, it's good to, it's good two weeks, so.
Mr. King's the voice. You say what now?
It's Tuesday, the twenty-nine, six P M.
So.
Second, the round motion. We will move the tax. If somebody else wants to make a motion, we'll move that right.
I call for the vote.
Please, you're not paying. Make a motion from May first, subsidiary motion, I'm patient, I do that. On the first, Thursday, the first?
Twenty-eight, the twenty-eighth, Mr. Kins.
And then the first.
First.
May first.
Well, we're gonna need all the prayer we can get ready, so be praying. Be praying, Mr. Lester, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we're gonna be meeting on the fifth, on the fifth, you might as well.
Alright.
Make it the fifth. On a record board, Nate, you'll have to move.
See you tomorrow, I'll bring the margaritas.
The, the. The fifth will have, the motion will have to include moving the tax. Deadline.
Consider it included.
What will be the tax debt? You're talking three weeks soon. I'll come through this out. So that will be eight twenty-fifth. I made the fifth.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. What, how, how much further will you have to extend the tax debt? You, if you go to the fifth, you have to extend it three weeks, three weeks from the fifth. You have to extend it three weeks from the fifth, cause you'll be able to get the tax. And extend it three weeks from the twenty-fifth. So you gotta give the opportunity for the systems to pay it, you can't set the tax rate on the fifth, you can decide on a, a number and say, any day from now, you can do. That, that ain't, that ain't giving people a, a fair opportunity to pay the tax. So anytime you shift a week, you gotta shift that twenty-fifth date a week, every two weeks, three weeks, five weeks. Was somebody not gonna be here on the twenty-eighth? Okay. Twenty-nine. Watching, and what the board has to remember consideration is, you're setting the tax rate on the real estate. If you push into those numbers, you're gonna be pushing into approving the budget to any other tax rates.
Saying we can't keep them all at the same time, what are those saying?
Yeah, I said you're coming. Twenty-eighth is on a Monday night.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes.
I'll make a motion, forty-eight cents, tax. I promise. I will. If I can get seconds. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Uh, if I can get her, I'll vote.
Alright, uh, in discussion on the forty-eighth either. If not, all in favor? All opposed?
Alright, folks, y'all gonna come back, we try.
So, we need to set this date for reconvene.
Yeah. Next week.
Gotta reconvene. You gotta pick the date to reconvene and then shift the tax date to, cause the, we got.
We'll reconvene on the regular meeting day of Monday the fifth, shift the tax date, whatever's necessary to meet the requirement.
Y'all gotta pick a date.
Fifth.
No.
Oh, for whatever the requirement is.
Day, day, the day with.
It's for you to figure out the date that's wrong though. I think we can hope that.
How about taxes due by June thirteenth? Okay, that says that. Motion. Day, day. All in favor? Restate that motion. Okay.
Alright, I'm gonna give it to you again.
Restate.
One for the road. We're gonna reconvene, the regular meeting day, May the fifth, six P M. Then we're gonna move the, the taxes due. We're at our.
Yes, sir.
Two thirteen. Two thirteen.
Okay.
Good, I'm in the next year.
All in favor? Any opposed? Go by a pose. Alright. Okay. Wait, man, we're not. I'm sorry. Yeah, we, I gotta have a board bigger, I gotta get the DSS support bigger. I understand, I understand. It's Luance, uh. Yeah, we'll be through here, this, we got, we got something else on the agenda. We're gonna do this. Okay, uh, we got committee of board's consideration, we got the Russell County Department of Social Services, Lynn Ramsey has resigned. And we need to make another. In your packet at the, at the end of the page, eighty-two and eighty-three. USC that the DSS board has asked for George McPoy to fill this position of Lynn Ramsey's resignation, so I need motion for approval. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you all for that. Uh, any board discussion, remind? Um, we got a motion to adjourn? Got a second, all in favor? Any opposed?
Yeah.